Stuart.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, stand by. I have something I'd like to, I would like to add to it. Under a pair of number eight, regular business E. No, I'm sorry, where is it? Under C, planning and zoning. I'd like to put in there a discussion on amending town ordinance part. I think it's part three, chapter 12, article three, noise, section 12 dash 61, sub paragraph nine, having to do with hours. Allowed to builders to build, demolish, excavate, et cetera, et cetera. Between seven AM and eight PM, I'd like to change that to a different time. So I'd like to discuss that.
So notice, anyone else have anything?
Make a motion, we accept the agenda as modified.
Motion made by David McCallum to accept the agenda as amended. Second. Councilman Brown. Oh, Councilwoman Dobbins, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. You've got your minutes of a regular town council meeting on July 19th. Any corrections or additions or comments on that?
Let's whip through.
Councilman Journey committed a motion to approve the minutes of the July 19th meeting. Councilman Brown made a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. And I'm assuming everyone has signed their closed session minutes, so we're going to ask for a approval of those. Councilman Brown made a motion to approve the closed session meetings on July 19th. Did you second it, Dave?
Yes, I did.
Councilman McGowan made a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, we'll have our first open forum. Thirty-four. Anyone wishing to speak, come forward, state your name, address, sign in. Hold your comments for three minutes, please. No one wishing to come forward, we will close our first open forum at six thirty-five PM. And move into our tonight's strategy or strategic plan discussion. By Lee Worsley, the prime stakeup.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. My name's Lee Worsley, I'm the executive director of the Triangle J Council Governments, and Leanna asked me to be here tonight regarding our proposal that I've submitted to Leanna to assist the town with your strategic plan. I know that this was a priority for the board with the adoption of your budget. And Leanna, Leanna and I spoke and we would be very pleased to help lead you through that process. As you know, a strategic plan for any community or any organization is extremely important to set your mission and vision and strategies for the next year, two years, five years. But I think especially for a town like Wilson's Mills that's experiencing a lot of growth and seeing a lot of change and thinking about how to deal with that, a strategic plan to help guide your decisions and to give direction to staff is extremely important. I won't bore you with all the details, you have a copy of the proposal before you. But basically, the proposal is broken out into four distinct steps. That any really strategic plan must go through first is your environmental scan and sort of thinking about your future. Spending time here, talking to staff, talking to you as the elected officials about what your vision and where the town is, what your constraints are, what your opportunities are, what your threats are. Then to get more input and assessment with a retreat from the town's staff leadership team to talk about potential strategies. And then, of course, retreat with the town board to talk about all of that information. And of course, you as the board will have the final say over any final document in any strategic plan. And then following that, drafting a report and doing some work on trying to identify as best we can under current conditions, what the financial implications are of your strategy. Just a little bit of background, just about me, I'll be leading the process. I'm not going to be handing this off really to any members of staff to lead. We'll have some members of staff working with me, but I've been doing this now for 22 years. I'm a former county manager, former assistant city manager. Done a few strategic plans in my career, did one when I was county manager in Green County. Done one for the large international city county managers association, which has 9,000 members. I was the co-chair of the strategic planning committee for that organization. And done a few other smaller plans, our organization has done several plans as well for members and for other organizations. So happy to answer any questions, we'd be excited to get started as soon as next month on the process if y'all are ready. And happy to answer any questions you may have, Mr. Mayor, members of the board.
Lee, do you, do you anticipate the retreat to be a one day affair?
I would, yes.
Okay. It's not going to be San Antonio or someplace?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Think we can find a good spot here in Johnson County to have you.
Okay. Once the, once it's all completed, I'm, I'm having to look through this again. What do you anticipate the final report to come in?
When, yeah. When, our timeline right now would be right at the beginning of the calendar year. So right around January, which would time, I think nicely with your budget process.
I apologize, it's right there in front of me.
You have lots of stuff to look at, so it's not a problem at all.
I got a lot going on up here. Will you meet with us individually at the retreat or prior to the retreat or?
We would meet individually with the members of the board and the mayor prior to the retreat to get your individual input and then use that to craft the retreat to work for consensus around the ideas.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Unless.
I'm looking forward to it myself.
Yes, sir, thank you. It's important and it's fun. Have a good time.
There'll be snacks and everything?
We can.
Okay, cool. All right, cool, that's fine, I'm good with it then.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, and I apologize, but as soon as y'all are done, I actually have to go to Kinley for their board meeting, which starts at seven. So I'm gonna hit the road and head on to Kinley, but I'm here for a few minutes if you need me, thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
Mayor, we do need a motion and a vote on that.
Do what?
We do need a motion and a vote for that proposal.
Make a motion. Make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we accept the proposed services for the town of Wilson's Mills strategic planning process by Triangle J Council of Governments as presented. So can you turn me up a little bit, that's? Thank you.
Second. Motion made by Councilman McGowan to accept the proposal from Triangle J Services. I seconded about Councilman Trippett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. Motion is carried. Hold on, these years, Leanna, just a our date for public hearing on this audit extension.
Yes, sir, this is the public hearing for the annexation that you called in June that we were not able to have last month because we didn't have the paperwork. So we just need to hold the public hearing for the annexation.
Have to hold a public hearing and then?
Approve the ordinance for the annexation, yes.
Okay. And we, you have a good date for a public hearing on it? Next council meeting or?
This is the public hearing tonight.
Okay. Anyone want to speak on behalf of the Kinley Town Limits, Corporation Limits to Capital Properties in Raleigh, which is a property on the other side of Sutherland Road? For those of you that don't know, it wraps back around to the river back in there. I don't know how many acres it is, quite a few. Anyone wish, wish to speak, be on behalf of or against it, come forward. Take your name and address. And sign in and hold your comments for three minutes, please.
My name's Andy Mills, I'm with Capital Properties and Shenandoah Homes, we're the owners of the property. Okay, got you. So my name's Andy Mills, I'm with Capital Properties, Shenandoah Homes, we're the owners of the property who's submitted the petition, so I just want to let you know, I'm here tonight if anyone has any questions.
I do have a question, sir. Would, all right, would you please address the, the proposed infrastructure over there? Specifically water and sewer, I'm interested in the sewer side of it.
Right.
Tell me what's, what's in the plan, tell me how, how you're going to fit into the organization, what's going to be the impact on the rest of Wilson's Mills and nearby developments?
So a- as far as the sanitary sewer goes, we've met with Johnson County and spoke with them, understand the situation right now where you've got some pump stations that's being improved and the wastewater treatment plant, the expansion. Internally, the sanitary sewer will be a gravity flow in infrastructure to a pump station. And we'll be pumping about a mile and a half, two miles down the road to connect to an existing manhole. In speaking with Chandra Farmer with Johnson County, we're going to kind of work together. There's about three force mains right now that's connecting into that one manhole. So we're going to look at it and evaluate it, see if it makes sense to maybe take a few of those offline. It just upsized the ones we're putting in there.
So I'm certainly not a sewer guy, that's not my thing, but how many homes are you proposing there?
Three hundred, I think it's three hundred and eighty-three.
Three hundred and eighty-three times roughly 2.87, which is the, the Department of Commerce's figure for average households underneath the roof, is that correct, or average people underneath the roof? So we're talking others, eight hundred, nine hundred folks?
Did you say?
Eight hundred or nine hundred folks, three hundred and some. Yeah, residents, not residences, but so nine hundred and some odd additional folks. That seems to me, and you're still not sure, you're not going to do your own pumping station there, is that correct? Oh, you are?
Correct, yes.
Who's paying for that?
The developer, we will do.
You'll be paying for that pumping station?
Infrastructure, the sewer system, the water system, the pump station, everything internally will be paid for by us, the developer. Even the line that we have to take down, down a couple of miles down the road to tie in. The only thing that I could see that the county would or would, would help out is if they require us to do an upsize for future growth or other, other neighborhoods.
Okay. Yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot to take in on one night. What's, what's the advantage to you of us possibly, possibly approving the annexation tonight? What's the advantage to you as opposed to waiting down the line when you guys have something more, more solid in your plans?
Well, we, we have already started the process with Wilson's Mills as far as submitting site plan for to meet the, all zoning and stormwater requirements of Wilson's Mills ordinance. We were just trying to do everything kind of concurrently as far as we've submitted all the site plan information. And, and we were going to do the annexation at the same time, just so we could get all that out of the way, out of the way. We are aware, like I said, of the sewer impacts and what's going on, and with our timeframe of permitting to get approvals and construction, our first phase to be ready to even start pumping the first gallon sewer is going to fall in the same timeframe of when our understanding of when the new wastewater treatment plant expansion will be complete.
All right, what about, what about freshwater? Are you tying into the Wilson's Mills water tower right here?
Yeah, well, what we'll do is we'll tie into the, the water main that's out front within the right of way. We're going to have two entrances, so we're going to loop the system through in order to keep the pressures up for fire flow purposes.
Is that the same water main that feeds Ives Landing? And the, and the cottages at Wilson's Mills?
That I'm not familiar with, the one that's right, it runs down Sutherland Road.
Yeah, yes, it's the same one. So you're going to tie into that, so we're going to have another three hundred and some odd homes tied into. And what we think, as a resident up there, and I've spoken with, I'm not just speaking for me, I'm speaking for Ives Landing and the new folks over at the cottages at Wilson's Mills, so we're going to be, you're going to be tying into a system that is already, I say strained as far as capacity goes. I'm, I'm making a statement, you don't, you don't have to comment on that.
Well, I'm just saying.
I'm just, I'm very.
Far enough along to start modeling the system yet to find out what the flows will be, to see where, you know, what we would have to do, any upgrades to in order to?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit leery, to be right up front with you, I'm a little bit leery until perhaps I get to sit down with Ms. Farmer. And, and discuss this with her also, we've had a number of discussions with county as, as residents of that whole area. And none of us are satisfied with what's happening up there, and now all of a sudden we're being asked to throw another three hundred and some rooftops on something that I, I don't, I don't think can stand that kind of thing, the capacity's not there. I would, I would like to hold this off for another month, if that's possible. So that we can, we can discuss this with Ms. Farmer.
Well, and I'd love to be available to meet with y'all and discuss, you know, how it felt along with Ms. Farmer and Sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, one, once I set that up with, with Ms. Farmer and any other members of the council that would like to be with me. I just, I just don't have that warm fuzzy feeling is what I'm saying. And if we can hold it off for another month, and I will certainly make sure through Leanna that you're invited to any meeting so that I walk away with a fuzzy.
That's what we want.
Okay, I cannot, yeah, yeah, I will tell you right now that I won't go for anything tonight until, is this really, is this up or is this? Okay. I, I can't in my, in, in good mind go for something tonight that I have a little reservation for. And, and you know, there are those folks that would say, you're doing this because you live in Ives Landing and it's for, you know, for your own good. You know, well, to a degree, we're at large here, none of us represent any particular area, so this, if this was Papa Creek, I'd do the same thing. But it's for Ives Landing and, and the new folks at the creek, well, or the cottages at Wilson's Mills. I'll stand up for them, all of them right now, so I understand what you're saying and I'll make sure you're in that meeting, but tonight I will not go with it. That, those are just my comments, thank you. It's nothing, it's nothing overly negative right now, saying because of the water and the sewer, I don't have the warm fuzzy right now, okay?
And, and you know, as we go through the process, like I said, right now, we just went through site plan approval, now we're going through the rezoning, trying to get this out of the way, and then we're starting to work, we've already submitted for land disturbance to Johnson County. We're ready to start submitting plans for stormwater, water sewer and all that. So we're going to be running all these models, you know, make sure everything meets all the guidelines, specifications, so maybe with some of that knowledge, it'll help ease your mind.
Okay, thank you.
So the only thing you're asking for tonight is for us to resign you?
That's correct, we would just like to.
No, this is an annexation, this is not a reason. Yeah, so all of the stuff that they've been working with, with planning, the planning department and with the county on the infrastructure is, is already in motion, this is just to annex them into the town. This doesn't have anything to do with the development process or what, what continues to move forward with site plans and the way that our UDO spells out how those things have to go. This is just to annex them into the corporate limits of the town. They could continue to do what they're doing even in the ETJ. So this is just to annex them into the town.
Yeah, I have a question, tell me home size, square footage.
We went with the lots that are 12,000 square feet. And so I'm trying to remember what our, I think our home sites are, I mean, our houses are going to be anywhere from sixteen hundred square feet to twenty-two hundred square.
Well, the immediate question is to extend the corporate limits. That basically can be done without any other obligations on it. My thoughts on it. And I would like to see us go ahead and extend the corporate limits so these gentlemen could go ahead and start working, even if you do have to stop along the way. And the thing most to extend the corporate limits. The Capital Properties of Raleigh.
Before, before, I, I did have another couple of questions, if I can. Is there any, as far as, as developer, is there any open spaces, is there any park area? Is there any, is it curb and gutter, are you, what, what, tell me what you're thinking about as far as
Well, as far.
what you want us to bring into the town?
Sure, absolutely, so, I mean, of course, first of all, I think what we're petitioning for tonight is just to become a part of Wilson's Mills, just to have the property annexed and to be a part of Wilson's Mills. With that, we're following all the unified development ordinance of the town as far as we're, we're using the curb and gutter, we're doing a low density stormwater, but we're also going to have treatment ponds in there to help control any excess stormwater runoff treatment as well as volume, you know, to meet pre and post. We're going to, we're meeting and exceeding all of the open space requirements. As well as our, our street alignment is set up for interconnectivity. Like I said, we've got two main entrances where we've already went through a TIA. We're going to have to do some turn lanes and widening for traffic purposes, so sort of in a nutshell, that's, that's what it is, we're, we're just already in the midst of working with staff and the town's ordinance to design the development.
I'd like to get some more information on there, because that's a lot of stuff coming into town right now, and I understand it's, it's just an annexation, but infrastructure altogether, is that a strain, your schools, your water, your sewer, all that stuff, I'd like to table this for a month, just to see just to get better input, better insight of where the town of Wilson Mills is going to go. Because we're getting ready to go, we're getting ready to go fast, and you're putting in all these subdivisions with all these houses and stuff, we, we've got to be on track to do what these guys are requesting of us.
Are you making it in form?
I'm making a motion, we table it for a month.
Next week.
It's our next month.
I'll second that.
Councilman Journey committed a motion to table this public hearing toward the next council meeting. I don't know what the date on it, anyway.
Can you turn your microphone on? Yeah. Thank you.
Saying, I, I think, I think you guys have had your public hearing, and just to clarify that you're tabling any, any action on that item till the next meeting.
Have a second. Councilman McGowan made a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? One opposition. Motion carried. To table it toward the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify for staff what it is that council wants to see before the next meeting?
Hey, I, I, here's my feeling on, is there's a process that's got to be going through, Randy, I understand what, what you and what you're both saying. The water's not going to run dry because the county can't afford to have it run dry. They're going to come to the school, irregardless of if it's in the town or not. So the, the impact is going to be the impact. So what we're, what we essentially just said is we don't want them to come into the town and pay the taxes. That's basically what we've just said, because the impact is going to be the impact.
But we, we got stuff in the town, if we can't we can't provide a sewer to people in town already, you don't have somewhere you're like.
Right. Right.
People live it on Durant Road. If we can't provide land. What are we going to do? And I know they're building on, they're building their own.
Infrastructure.
Great point, great.
But what happens whenever we don't have the allocation for sewer for the people that need it inside city limits already? That, that's my, I got to take care of people here first.
I, I, and I totally agree with that, it's just, you know, that, e- e- even if they come and they say, well, that they're going to put them on septic tanks. Right. The impact for us as a town is going to be the same, for this school is going to be the same, there's going to be no difference. You know, we need to rally, I think, I think that, that is a great point based on last month's meeting as well. Is that, that we need to rally with the county and make sure that we're projecting far enough ahead for our growth for the western part of this county and especially for us for Wilson's Mills, but I, I mean, I, that's, that's a great point.
See, a lot of things we're talking about, Tim and me. You built, that's their, their, the building all the way down to the pumping station, and that's fine, you know, that, that looks great on paper and I'll go along with something like that. But I need that warm fuzzy feeling from Chandra and the water folks. I had the water folks out there and I was talking with one of the supervisors, and I don't know why this thing keeps going up and down, but I was talking with one of the supervisors who came out to talk with me and he said, he was having a meeting that day with Chandra, this was several months ago, and he said, I'm trying to recommend to them that we put Ives Landing and the new division, the new cottages at Wilson's Mills under the water tower, they call it the 495, I think it is, and it's up off of Vincent, further up closer to 42. That, that one up there on 42, you know what I'm talking about? That, that is a 495 foot above ground AGL and, and the water pressure is tremendous, he says there's plenty of capacity up there. But the county insists that our part of Wilson's Mills be under this right here, which is the 383. And I, I, we are feeling the effects of it, no matter how you measure it, and I just see 300 more rooftops coming in and I'm going, and they're going to tie into the same line that we're in. Again, like Randy says, I, I've got to answer to the folks in Ives Landing and, and over at the cottages at Wilson's Mills. Because I think it's going to affect us, and I don't want to vote on something until I get that warm fuzzy. And sit down with this gentleman and, and Chandra and, and maybe Randy, just sit there and look at this thing and let, let them tell me what's going to happen. And what's going to hap, what's going to happen to the water pressure? Why? Because I'm going to have to answer to the folks that come to my house. Or that walk by my house and they see me out there going, what's up with the water here? They're building another 300 houses over there, already our water pressure stinks, so. So I've got a lot of folks to answer to. Again, that's why I voted no and I, I feel okay with that. It's only a month. It's only a month. That's correct.
So, you know. The sewer question is, is not a sewer question for us, so they're, they're. For them, that means we'll be able to. Basically what we're doing. I voted yes on the motion. I'm agreeing a little bit with Tim right now. We're, this has, has nothing to do with annexation. That's all we're asked. That's all, that's all. That's all they're asking. Do we not want these people in our town to get their taxes? I think we do.
You keep hitting up on taxes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we voted to, uh, table it through the next council meeting to, uh, let's, uh, proceed on.
I, I would still, I still, I'm still just asking though, what you want staff to do between now and next month? Are you asking staff to get you some more information?
And voted to decide on doing that yet.
That's, and we're, and we're starting all of that with the strategic plan that you just approved tonight. That is the first thing we have to do to move forward with everything else.
Okay, that, that's got to be done. That's no doubt about it. But we've got to make sure the folks inside of town have allocation also. Because if we give it all away and annex new stuff, and I, and I understand they want to come in, I'd love to have them in, but we gotta take care of the people we've got here first. One month is not gonna hurt. It's gonna, is not gonna set them back because they're gonna still proceed with every, all their planning and all their studies until we annex them in. That's all. Annexation is just a, it's just a label right now.
I'm just trying to make sure that, that council gives you what you need before next month since you've tabled it till next month to get more information. So what information you're looking for is, is this going to affect allocation for residents?
Is, is it gonna affect the, the remaining houses, especially off of Durant Road and Lou Circle and Powell Drive? I know that's not a lot of houses, but then could we set something up with, uh, with, uh, Chandra? Go down, go down, go down and meet with her and come along and just take an hour and talk with her. Okay?
Let's see if you can get her questions answered between now and next council meeting and then make a decision. Uh, we're, uh, move on into a regular business meeting. I, uh, event support, I don't have anything. I don't know if Miss Emily has, it doesn't going on, so, uh, we'll skip both me and her. They approach in, uh, kind of tripping.
Well, right now, we're waiting on what Randy just talked about, the sewer feasibility study. And making this thing with triangle J tonight, that's part of what the feasibility study will deal with. So we'll just have to wait to that feasibility study comes in in January. To look at anything in terms of sewer in the town of Wilson Mills.
Uh, planning and zoning, Ms. Carolyn Dobbin.
I, I don't have anything tonight for the planning and zoning. But the report is attached in your package for any questions.
Was there a meeting this past month?
No.
No meeting?
No meeting. Didn't have anything to discuss.
No business, okay.
No business.
I thought you were, you won't ask a question.
Say again. No, I have something else when you're finished with the rig.
Right, you have the discussion on that C section twelve sixty-one?
Yes, I do. If you're, if you're ready for it. And I, is my battery okay? It's going up and down and. Yeah, but, okay. All right, we'll see what happens. You all have, each of you has in front of you a copy of the, uh, the ordinance section twelve dash sixty-one and highlighted there on the bottom, well, actually highlighted this paragraph, subparagraph three and subparagraph nine. Let me, let me tell you what's going on. And that's the folks that are building behind me in the, uh, building behind Ives Landing. Building behind Ives Landing, uh, at the cottages. There, turns out there's two separate builders there. If you recall, a few years ago, we had a meeting with H and H and H and H promised, uh, all kinds of different things for us. And so far, as far as I can determine, they're holding their end of the bargain. Yeah, they're, they're holding up, they're holding up to their end of the bargain. However, they have sold a number of the lots in there to the outfit, uh, Cavernous and Cave. And so there's two separate crews in there. And if you recall, the H and H folks said they would, they promised to have a supervisor on site at all times, which they have. It's the Cavernous and Cave folks who have purchased the lots from H and H that are abiding by not much of this stuff. First off, if they have a supervisor there, he's very, very hard to find and he's rarely ever there and I couldn't point to who he is. But what's happening is they're out there building seven days a week to include holidays. Now, grant you, I'm retired, but there are folks that live around me that are not retired, that are working and that a lot of them have small children now. These people are back there last Monday, one week ago today, I think it was, correct Wendy, one week ago today that I alerted you. They're out there at six forty A M, six forty A M, banging and, and throwing stuff out of second story windows into metal dumpsters at six forty A M. That's a violation right there. There's not supposed to start until seven A M. So they do start at seven A M. They, from that point on, they've started at seven A M. But they're doing it Sat, Monday through Friday and Saturday and Sundays and holidays. There are folks that have children, like I said, that are working and they'd like to sleep a little bit on Saturdays and Sundays. I'm not telling the builders, no, you can't do it, but I'm saying, let's give it a break on Saturdays and Sundays and nationally recognized holidays. Start at nine A M. That's all. Just a two hour difference. I don't think it's gonna cost them the sale of any homes, but it sure is gonna help and become a lot more neighborly to all the folks in Ives Landing and to all the other folks that are now purchasing homes at the cottages that have to put up with this too. I don't like seven A M, but I'm getting used to it. But on Saturdays and Sundays, to me, I don't know when a Saturday is or a Sunday is. They're all the same. But the folks down the street from me, they're, they're getting hammered awake at seven A M on Saturdays, Sundays and holidays. So what I'm asking for is that to be changed. And what I'd like it to say is after you see where it says, uh, seven A M and eight P M, I'd like to come in there and say, and nine A M to eight P M on Saturdays, Sundays and recognized national holidays, et cetera, et cetera, and leave it at that. I know we can't vote on that tonight. Uh, it's gonna have to have a public hearing, but I would like, um, I'd like to put that into, uh, into the plan for next meeting to have a public hearing on this. Wendy is going to notify them, uh, both H and H and Cavernous and Caves as to what the requirements are right now. And that is not six forty A M, seven A M, seven days a week. So far, it's okay. I want it changed next time.
Change it. How do we enforce it if we're not enforcing it now?
That lady right there.
Code enforcement officer to enforce it.
That's that lady right there.
But she, she can do everything because.
I mean, if we, if we make another rule and we, we can't even enforce the rule we have, that's my question. How, how you gonna enforce a new?
Well, that rule got enforced when I went out there in my pajamas and I told that guy, it's six forty A M, it's not seven A M and he stopped.
Did he stop?
That, that worked. And if I had to call the police, I'd do it. And they can look up this thing on, on their, on their, uh, their CAD system just like anybody else can and say it's a violation. And typically, H and H is gonna go with it, but Cavernous and Caves just needs to be notified that it's a violation. And I think we can get it to change.
And you said you couldn't get up with the, the builders. You couldn't.
The Cavernous and Caves supervisor, I couldn't find him anywhere out there.
That's the difference whenever they sold that property.
Yeah.
They don't have to abide by what H and H told us.
That's okay. They have to abide by our ordinance. And that ordinance should not have just said, you know, seven to eight P M, you know, whatever days you feel like. It should have taken into account, uh, Saturdays and Sundays and national holidays. And it should have taken into account that when they're building developments like this, that the person that buys the first house in there has to be subjected to this for the next year and a half. And so do all of the others, all the way down the line until that last home gets sold and it's done with. I don't think it's a big deal. I really don't think it's a big deal.
I don't rate. I mean, especially if there's no consequence. I mean.
Well, there are consequences. There's consequences to, to violating anything within our ordinances. And that's, that's Wendy right there and it's, it's our.
Wendy, so if somebody, if, if the police goes out there at six forty A M, what's the consequence for them starting at six forty A M? As opposed to eight o'clock A M?
If someone breaks our ordinances and P D notifies me that they've been out there, then I write a citation for them. The citation on the first offense is a hundred dollars. On the second offense, it's two hundred dollars. And on the third offense, it's five hundred dollars, the third offense thereafter.
The only thing, the only thing that I think that I would disagree with everything that's, anything that's been said is these people, well, all of them are on a timeline. And them working on the weekend is not gonna change. Them working on holidays is not gonna change. If they have a, a timeline that they have to do, they're gonna work. These people, they've got people that's gonna work. Now, I don't know. What it's, what will it take for us to change this on weekends, weekends and holidays? I don't know. I haven't, nobody's told me that.
We just need to hold a public hearing next month to change the ordinance. And if, if they break the code on the weekends or a holiday, we wouldn't have a code enforcement officer working on Saturday, Sunday or holiday anyway. Code enforcement officers Monday through Friday. But that's, that's the police department's job as well is to enforce the code for the town. So it would be a police officer that would be called out on a Saturday, Sunday or holiday.
But wouldn't we not also have to notify every single development that we're changing, changing?
Sure, yeah.
You know, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna not only limit that, this group from working on holidays and, and weekends, we're gonna eliminate everyone working on holidays and weekends before nine o'clock.
Right, it would be a change in the ordinance, so everybody would have.
Are we gonna say that they cannot begin work till nine o'clock?
That's my goal, nine A M.
Or are we gonna say they can't begin work that produces noise?
No, the, the, the way the ordinance, uh, if you read that paragraph, it says, the erection, excavation, demolition, alteration or repair of any building, infrastructure or other structure in a residential or business district other than between the hours of. Does that answer for you?
Is there, uh, is there a specific decimal level for the noise?
There is, but not necessarily in regard to construction. So I doubt if they were doing something that wasn't making any noise, they're probably not gonna get a complaint. Police officer's not gonna go out. Nobody's gonna get any kind of violation. But if they're out there banging the hammer or throwing metal into a bin or whatever it was that they were doing that was making noise that causes attention and somebody complains about it and calls the police department or on a weekday calls the code enforcement officer, then that's when they would be cited for doing something wrong.
Yeah, I, I will, I will add one other thing that when you talk about decimal levels, et cetera. These guys are, when they're out there working on Saturdays and Sundays, they're, they're just having a good old time. They're working and I appreciate that. They're working very, very hard. I mean, they take like a, they're sweating in a hundred degree day and they take like a fifteen minute break for lunch and then they're back at it again. I, I stand back in awe of their, their dedication and their abilities. But they also, on Saturdays and Sundays, both days, they turn that, that, uh, that boombox up to its fullest because they don't have anything to worry about. I should have called the police on it, but I, I let it go this time so we could sit and talk about it. But that thing, you could hear that, um, not a mile away, but a long ways, that, that, that bass beat just constantly drumming into your ears the whole time. And they're over there yelling and having a good time and singing and hammering away and you, I, I, they're trying to work. I understand that. They're trying to make it. All right, all right, Tim, I must have, I should go into stand up. I really should if it's, if it's.
About that bass.
About that. Yeah, it's all about that bass. You're right. I love it. But you see, if you see what I'm getting at, I, I appreciate what they're doing and that's fine, but I just want the hours changed. If they, if they complete, still play with that boombox, yeah, I'll have to call because it is, if I had a child that was trying to sleep in the afternoon, that thing just pounded in your ears all the time. Anyway, my, my goal is just to get the hours changed from seven A M to nine A M on Saturdays and Sundays and holidays. That's all. Give the folks that have to get up early a little time to sleep in. Not, I'm trying, not trying to make this overly difficult or overly thought out. Just change the hours on Saturdays and Sundays and, and holidays.
From nine to work, you said?
No, from seven A M to nine A M. That's all. Just change that seven A M to nine A M for Saturday, Sundays and holidays. Not asking a lot.
Just two hours.
Just two hours. Other than that, and the boombox, they're, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty good neighbors. They're doing what they have to do. Maybe a question that staff has when they're trying to draft this, but the exception is for the allowable times of operation, which is seven A M to eight P M. And you're wanting to delay the start till nine A M. Just on weekends, Sa- Saturday, Sunday and holiday. And then the, the end time is still the same. Yes, yeah, that's fine.
They still gonna be out there making noise and doing all that, right?
Bringing it nine A M though. That's what I'm saying. The folks down, the folks down the street can get two hours of sleep.
And yeah, because of the, the, the weather, yeah. Yeah, the weather, a lot of people don't.
Duly noted, Tim. Duly noted. I'll leave it at that.
You don't have a motion.
Yeah, make a motion.
You don't need a motion.
Okay, no motion, that's fine.
We'll just put it on the agenda next month as a, as a public hearing and you can discuss it and change it if you want to in September.
What were you saying over there, Leanne?
You don't need a motion for that. We're just gonna put it on the agenda for September.
And, 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 and the other thing that you have to get into is what Tim just got through saying. And there's a lot of construction companies right now with the temperature being as hot as it is. For them to logically do what they need to do, some of them are gonna start at six into five o'clock because they're gonna try to beat the heat to save their employees. So, so, so you know, it's, it's, it's a, you know, when you limit them to start at nine o'clock and it's gonna be a hundred degrees that day, you're putting them right out there in the most dangerous time for them to work.
That has too much to do with it. Right now, when I watch them get up there on a, on a seven or six twelve pitch roof with no hard hat and no way of stopping if they, I just sit there watching from my porch waiting one of them's gonna slip. Do what? The ground will catch them. That's it. Yes, sir. You have, uh, the chief had to leave, uh, early. He had to go to, uh, the range for qualification purposes. So he could not be with us and he asked my permission to give this. The report is in front of you and if you have any questions, I hope you don't have any because I can't answer them, but we can, uh, we can pass them on to the chief. I am very impressed. You know, one of my biggest things is, um, vehicle stops because that's where, uh, police departments gather a lot of intelligence. And, uh, they're up to ninety-two vehicle stops. Now, they're not, they're not, uh, chicken stuff. Vehicle stops, they're legitimate vehicle stops and, um, you can. Vehicle stops, they're legitimate vehicle stops. And, um, you can see that there's, uh, thirty-seven citations out of that. So they're doing a fine job with that and I'm, I'm happy for it. I'm ha- I don't, I'm not happy to see the, uh, the accident investigations up to thirteen, but that's not anything they can do. Yeah, I'm sure. And I'm sure, I'll bet all of that came from, from seventy, right? Yeah. So any questions on this?
I just wanna make one comment. I think what we did with the budget, raising the salary and giving these people something to look forward to. One of the key things that I think is important on this thing right here, it says W M P D currently has one vacant full-time position and they have three experienced applicants for them. Heck, that, in the, in the, for the last year, we've had that kind of situation, had no experienced applicants. We've had no applicants. So what we did to help the, the police with the salary and stuff is paying off. It's making it, and, and I was told by one of the officers that one of the officers that left to go somewhere else wants to come back. Because it's a better, it's a better situation than Wilson Mills. And for us to keep a good police force, we're gonna have to keep that up.
Yeah, exactly. In fact, uh, I was speaking with, uh, one of the officers and he said that right after we made this salary adjustment for these folks, Fuqua Verena saw the writing on the wall. They jacked theirs up to beat up, to match ours now. So it's good for police officers across the board. Not just ours, but all of them. And that's it for the report.
Everybody's got Patrick's report. Um, one of the biggest things that we're working on, or he's working on, is to get the uh, bids out for the streets, um, Coria and the Row Lane, Deer Flag and Prickett. Should have those by next, um, our next council meeting. Adam Stuckey with his backhoe service, the, um, they're having an issue getting pipes and construction materials for his, um, project on Stone Ridge. As soon as we can get that stuff in, he's gonna do that. Um, he's also gonna look at, um, Country Valley while he's doing this project because it, the water's shedding like it's supposed to. The work we did on is good, but it needs to be, um, scraped really good and some rocks put down.
Oh, why was Antler Drive not included in that?
I think Antler was, but it's just misprinted. It, Antler was included, yeah. Antler's in that. All those, all those roads.
Antler was included, Patrick.
All of us together. But we'll have that next month and we need to start looking at getting a backhoe. We've got some ditches that need to be dug and cleaned out. It'll help us get some trees and stuff that have fallen and pushed out of the way that need to be actually gotten up and taken to a recycler somewhere or taken to the landfill. So, and they're not cheap. Need to be looking at that, so.
There's one behind my house. You wanna drive it away. They're out there with it all the time.
We'll, we'll send, uh, chief over to your house then if you pick it up.
Randy, if you're finished, I, I wanna discuss, if you don't mind, the, um, uh, the, what I understand is getting to be a, a problem over at the park with respect to, uh, theft and destruction. Theft of, uh, destruction of things that are in the bathrooms. Um, theft of horseshoes and whatever manner of things. And it, it, it distresses me greatly that we, we put all this emphasis on the park and we have a very nice park and things are being destroyed.
That's gonna happen. We don't have surveillance up there. We, we've gotta get our cameras and stuff situated. And you can't have an officer up there twenty-four hours a day.
Right. Are they, are they, they're, obviously the gates are closed at night and I'm assuming that's when most of this hap- I'm just assuming that's when it happens. Are they, are they coming in that section of the park where the get, the, the fence does not complete? Are they walking up from the new homes down there or any ideas at all?
I have no idea on where they're coming from.
And I, I know it's not gonna break the bank for a set of horseshoes every once in a while, but what are we currently doing with horseshoes? Somebody wants to go out and play horseshoes. Are they there? Do they have to call somebody? Do they have to sign them out? What's the?
They're out now because before we were putting them up because they were getting stolen and then people were complaining because there weren't any, there wasn't any equipment out there to play with when they got there. So we're leaving them out.
And where do we leave them? At the horseshoe pits themselves? So we just set them there?
That's correct.
And how, how many sets have we gone through over the past year or so?
No, I mean, not since, I think we lost, we bought the last set.
Okay, so we've lost one set, okay. Is there anything else that gets, what about the inside and the bathrooms and things like that? Now, they're locked at night, so it's gotta be daytime destruction.
I think some of the problems is coming from Mill Creek. Some of the problems coming from Mill Creek.
Okay.
Um, Ben's, Ben has seen some people walking across that field, uh, from the side. Um, so I think that's what part of our issue is. And I think we need to probably change out the, um, soap dispensers in there because they're actually leaking. And it looks like it's like getting destroyed some, but it's actually, they're leaking on the counters. So it's something that we need to change out.
Have we, have we lost any of the fans on the pavilion side?
Uh, no, I think we have one that's not working. I need to check that.
We haven't lost any. They're not broken. Nobody's hanging. Okay. So is it, would you classify any of this as a problem or is it just routine stuff?
We do have cameras too. I just have to, I, I have to install them all. We have cameras. We bought them. Um, I just have to get them all installed.
Okay. And we have a Wi-Fi out there to hook them to or what's the deal? How's that work?
It hooks into a monitor and then it has a hard drive that I can, uh, I can pull off of.
Who's watching the monitor?
It's all gonna be on a hard drive. Everything's gonna be set up.
So if something happens, you go back and you look at it. Okay, thank you. That's all I need. I'm just, I don't wanna make sure that our stuff isn't getting destroyed. Oh, okay, all right. I ju- I just wanna make sure that we don't lose anything out there, that's all.
I can set it under the magnolias tree there at half the beach park. And then around the end, you see a motorized vehicle coming out from around the edge of woods and circling and all that. I don't know, can't see them good enough to tell what kind of, or the motorcycles or four horses or what, but in the back corner back down there, pretty much hauling dirt out of the park area down through that embankment and filling in those, uh, excess, uh, holding things. If they, they've got a pretty good drive that goes down that embankment, they have a thing so they can come through there shoot right up that hill and ride the park anywhere else that they want to. Uh, the only thing I know to do is pay some, there are police attention up there. Stop them one day and, uh, either write them a citation or run them out.
Let's see, all the, all that work and effort, money destroyed little by little.
And, um, he also, Patrick's got the seesaws. They've been put up and seem to be working well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Huh? Um, the bid proposals on our building have came in. We need to, we've got some decisions that need to be made off some bad decisions. So, um, Leanne, if you want to talk about this one, floor is yours.
So we sent the bids out to a total of seven contractors. At two respond back that they did not want to bid on it. These two that we received, and then I did not hear back from the other three, and I've got the list if anybody needs to see it. Um, these were mostly ones that were reckon, excuse me, recommended to me by Johnson County Inspections. Um, so if, if you remember back when we originally talked about ordering the building or building, the building, and we had those bids, we had one contractor that sent a bid in for a turnkey job for everything for about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And, um, what council decided to do was to purchase the building only and then piece, piece out the rest of the project to other bidders. And that person that had sent the original bid in for a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, I also sent this bid request to him and he was one of the ones that did not want to bid on it. Um, his concern was that the building that we actually purchased is not, um, the type of building that is approved for commercial with heating and air. And it, we intended to have heating and air in this building. Um, so part of what these bids that we did receive, part of what's making the price on those so high is that using the building that we've already decided to purchase and having to make changes to that building in order for it to be a commercial building like we're be, like we need. So the one from, um, Stevenson General Contractors came in at, um, and this includes architectural services and engineer, um, site plan services as well. And his total came in at, I was gonna flag my page, I'm sorry. Three hundred and sixty-three thousand, six fifty-eight. That is to, um, construct the building, do the foundation, architectural work, the, um, site plan work, the safety plan for Johnson County Inspections and to outfit the inside of the building for heat and air and it's, and, um, offices. That does not include what we have left owing on the building that we were gonna purchase from another company. And then the second bid that came in was from Vision Contractors Incorporated, and that is through McClintock Incorporated in Raleigh. And he had contacted me before he sent in his information to let me know that when they sent it in, they would send a total for design permit drawing and construction administration. But that the other portions of it, he could not give me exact prices because until they got started looking at, at what was going on with the building that we had ordered, they wouldn't be able to give me an amount. So his comes to one twenty-nine, five sixty. And if he needed to do storm war, storm order control, design, another ninety-three, seventy-five. And then if you look through the rest of his pages, he discusses the different types of services that would be needed to outfit that building that we'd already purchased. Um, so we, we don't know what the total would be for him. We would have to figure that out or they would have to figure that out as they move forward if they were awarded the bid. We paid, um, five thousand, seven hundred dollars, five thousand, six hundred and some change to Premier Building Systems as a deposit for that original building that you approved. And it's set to be delivered August thirtieth. So I think your options would be to decide if you want to spend this much on taking that building and making it into a commercial building that we can use or if you want to go back and bid this, bid this out piece by piece. Um, which I don't recommend because it's not gonna be any different than just somebody coming in and doing a turnkey. Somebody else is gonna have to work after the last person that worked on it. Um, or take a loss on the building that we purchased from Premier and cancel it, lose our deposit and start fresh with one contractor to do the entire project and hope that it would be less.
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused too. So what, basically what we're looking at right now is we've paid fifty, it's forty-eight thousand for the bill.
Well, we haven't paid that. We've only paid the deposit.
That, that's the, that's the going price of the building, forty-eight thousand dollars. Well, if you add that to the three hundred. Yes.
Right. And it's just going, it's not to be put together or anything. It's just.
That's just the building.
The building.
So if you add what Mr. Stevenson put into it at the three hundred and sixty-three, you're looking at around four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a building that was bid at a hundred and sixty-eight for a turnkey project, or a hundred and sixty-four for a turnkey project. So not only have we got to pay for a building of fifty thousand dollars to build it, just to build it's three hundred and sixty-three thousand. Premier Builders, no.
They can, but that's not part of what we paid them.
They, they can, but that, that was not a part of the deal that was made.
Who made the deal?
That was the former mayor's decision.
So is this, the building you're talking about?
Just the maintenance building, yes.
Yeah, the building you're talking about that is not up to standards for heating and air conditioning is the same building that got shoved down the council's throat.
Maintenance building that was voted on the purchase.
Thank you very, you're saying the same thing. I'll say it, nobody else will. But that's, that's water under the bridge, but it's just your, uh, it's just your, I should shut the mic off right about now.
My opinion, my opinion only is we need to take our losses with the, with the building and rebid it as a turnkey project.
We, we, if we know anything about people that, that bid, that guy, those guys that only bid on the, in, on the, uh, first part of it, the hundred and nineteen thousand. When they start bidding out parts, 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 they're gonna, they're gonna kick you for about more than that bid is. And I'm kinda gonna agree with Randy. Is that we need to take, we need to go into and talk about this and close session and talk about what, what we need to do because we don't need to pay four hundred and some thousand dollars for that building. That, you know.
We just, we, we really don't need to go into closed session. We just need to, we just need to decide if we're gonna take our losses and, and put it out for public bid again.
The size of the building.
Five, five thousand square feet, five thousand square feet. It was fifty feet by seventy-five enclosed and twenty feet, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty feet, twenty-five by fifty shelter.
What was our deposit again?
Fifty, fifty.
It was close to fifty-seven hundred.
Fifty-seven hundred.
That's what we would lose, right? And they don't make a building that would satisfy the, the, the code requirements that we could take that deposit and apply it towards?
But you probably can, but you're still gonna run into the three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars to try to get somebody to put it together.
Oh, okay.
What you, what we're looking at, David, is looking at going back and letting the contract, letting the contractor bid that they gonna, but they gonna, they gonna do the whole project, the whole thing. We're not gonna have anything to, you know, uh, we're not gonna have somebody put down the pad. We're not gonna have somebody do this. The contractor's gonna take care of all of it.
Well, I don't want, I don't want you to buy a fence and tell, and want me to put it up. I want you to buy my fence.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
You don't buy a building from somebody and ask somebody else.
Exactly, because they, they're gonna cut, charge you out of the world to do it.
This, this was kinda before my time and I, I'm just learning here, but, um.
So you're talking about stow it in backhoe from square, right?
And taking our fifty-six hundred dollar.
Right.
Which if, if we can get, the turnkey bid before was a hundred and sixty.
Yeah, I'm sure it'll be more than that.
It's gonna be more than that now, but what I'm saying is, you know, that's, that guy, if he would, willing to do it for one sixty-three a year ago, you know, he might be able to do it for two hundred thousand. We're saving two hundred thousand dollars. It's up to everybody else.
I would say let's, let's, uh, let's, let's, I'll make a motion. We table this. Let council look at the contract, look it over well before we make any decisions. Let him read and make sure that that's an option that we have before we go any further. I make that informal motion.
Yeah, we need to sit down and think about it.
Part of the deal is that, that building is due to be delivered August thirty-first, so.
Yeah.
We gotta get rid of that. We gotta decide what to do before that because our next meeting isn't until September.
Can, can we have council look it over and go on his recommendation? Um, just basically if everything, if we can.
Yeah, I, I think you can decide to do that. And if I find that, hey, look, you're, you're, you're gonna be on the hook for the whole fifty or something, then, and, you know, it can be contingent on me saying, look, yeah, I think the only thing you lose is the five thousand deposit. And, and if you want to make, if that's the action you wanna take, you can do that and just have it subject to check by me.
Right.
I agree with that.
Looking over it, counselor. Look over the part that when we gave them the requirements, did we add, did we make one of the requirements that it would be up to, uh, up to par for heating and air conditioning?
No, we did not.
We did not. So the person who put that into that outfit didn't. We did not. So, the person who put that into that outfit did not think to look at that.
I think it, you know, I'm relying on memory here, but I think the request for a, a proposal was a, a three sentence email.
That is correct.
Yeah, that is correct. It was an email, very, very professionally done. Voted that down.
So, so just, just make sure that I, I'm, I'm clear about this and, and I still have my motion on the table to, to table this, any decision on it. But this proposal that we, that we have from these two folks is contingent on it being heating and air conditioning, of course, support for, for good reason. But if you do away with all that stuff and you just say, well, it's just a, a, a maintenance building. We'll have lights in there. Is that a possibility?
To not have heat in and air. Depends on what we're going to use it for.
Well, we don't know right now.
Is to have a, a section of that ready for us to use as a town council meeting. That's the plan.
Oh.
Temporarily, until we get a.
Well, like I said, I'm just learning.
Yeah.
But there are also.
So, you would have to have air conditioning in that, that, that wing of it, now.
Well, absolutely.
That, the, you know.
Even the office spaces is going to have to be.
Alright, I, I, I was just thinking, man.
No, 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 not, not strictly. You've got
There are offices in the kitchen and bathrooms.
Okay, alright.
Patrick will be moved from the little trailer to their offices, yeah.
The county manager Brown made a motion to table this with no alternative to do like today.
But the building wouldn't be delivered, obviously.
Yeah, my motion was the, to table this until council could, could view the contract and live, and look at the contract to make sure that we can only cut our losses at a certain amount.
And I second that.
And let me, let me just, just say something I, I think so that everybody's thinking the same way. I don't, I don't have an issue with that at all. I'm just saying that if, if the building is set to be delivered on the thirty-first and you table it until I review it, even if I look at it tomorrow, you're not going to, unless you call a special meeting, you're not going to be able to um, take action on that until it's delivered, in which case, in which point you, you have to pay for it, so. Um, so I, I, my suggestion was, you know, well, just keep that in mind as, as you take, as you consider it.
Well, can we not call a special meeting? If we have to?
I say we just let Leanna own the attorney's um, whatever the attorney finds out. If, if we can go ahead and let Leanna make that decision, yes. Take the five, the fifty-six hundred dollars and take our losses or if they're going to foot us for the whole fifty thousand, we're going to have to back up and punt.
Yeah, let me, let me add one more thing. Just, I, I think, you know, you're both, everybody wants me to look at the contract and decide whether you have any liability beyond the five thousand. But I, I think if your inclination is you want me to do that for the purposes of taking that loss, then I think you're better off saying, let's proceed that way unless I determine that you might have greater exposure, in which case then it would be incumbent on you to say, okay, I'll tell, I'll tell Leanna and then she can tell you guys and say, hey, you know, it looks like we might have more on the line, so let's let's deviate from that plan of action.
Councilman Triv.
Well, his.
Trip made a motion.
I will withdraw my motion.
We got one.
So, so what we're going to, what we're getting ready to say is that we're going to give Leanna permission to, if, if, if our attorney makes the conclusion that we can get out of this building contract with, with a loss of fifty-six hundred and some dollars. That we, that she will be able to do that and then we'll reopen the bidding on a turnkey project.
I mean, you might not even have to go to that second step yet.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, but I'm just saying, we're going to give Leanna permission to cancel the uh, contract if we can do it and only, only lose fifty-six hundred dollars.
Only.
Correct.
I, I mean, it's, well, only is not, is not a good word.
I'd like to send a thank you letter to that person, but anyway.
But uh.
Depends on what it says. If it, if it, you know, allows you to cancel it prior to delivery, then, you know.
It's, is there a motion on table anywhere? Is there a motion on table? I know that.
Did you have a motion there, J C?
Well, I was just discussing.
I turned J C, J C's discussion into a motion then. So, we'll, see what we can do. I'll second that discussion, motion. I make a motion that we let Leanna. You've already got it, okay, so move.
Johnson Journeyman made a motion that Leanna, I guess, handled it.
That's the best way to do it.
Attorney handle it.
For her and the attorney to take the best course of action.
Okay.
We're going to go buy a real big building.
Councilman Triv made a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Anything else, Mr. Journey? Okay. Finance office report, Michelle Hertz. Anyone have any questions or comments on her report? If anyone has any questions or comments. I don't, I guess I have most to approve it, but.
No, sir.
Uh, town administrator report, Mr. Leanna Ward.
I don't have anything, but I did want to remind you before you, um, after you make a motion to go into closed session during the, the break, if you can let us get the photo for the website. That way Emily can leave. That's all I have.
Okay. At this time, we'll open our second open forum. At seven forty-nine P M. And when we wish to speak or have any comments, come forward and uh, take your name, address. Anyone coming forward, we'll uh, load the second open forum at seven fifty. Name is Donald Byrd. It'll go to him anyways, it don't matter. Uh, my name is Donald Byrd, address seven fifty-five Paratene Road, Clayton, North Carolina. Uh, I'd like to comment on what y'all did to the gentleman about the subdivision and the annexation of land. What y'all discussed, if you read your ordinances, you know your orders, you should. Most of you voted on them, except for Tim. He was not asking for anything about a subdivision. He was asking his land annexing city limits. All that other discussion was unnecessary. Which just pauses the meeting and makes it last so much longer. Also, I don't quite understand, I love being elected to look at the town, the whole town, not one subdivision. I keep hearing Ives landed, Ives landed, Ives landed and people working, people sleeping. I can be there at my house, they're building houses right in front of me. I can close my doors and windows are closed. I can't even hear. If you don't like the noise, get in the house or go to the beach or something the weekend. But uh, these people got to make a living. They need to work. And y'all need to think about it with hours. Y'all voted on that when y'all took in the ordinances. Well, Irish people work and couldn't work. Because all this has done lasts two to three years because we went through it. About ten months, two nights a week. And y'all grabbed it and went and changing things that weren't imported. The things that are imported, you didn't open your mouth about. And I want to say, I love you, you know, coming in elections or whatever you're going to do. Support the whole town, not just part of it, the whole town. What about this subdivision going to be built over here on Strickler Road? They got to get water out of this tank too. Maybe we should get some forty-two and, but there. But right now we ain't, so we need to support the whole town for all of us to have the same benefits. We can't do nothing on subdivision. The more they all took that away from us. So, never had to play with it. What we used to weed out and straighten out, we don't do it no more. We just look for this. They met the criteria, we sent them on the app. And uh, this guy has already sent the paperwork to us one time. Me as the president of planning board, we approved it and we sent it forward. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll close our second open forum at seven fifty-three P M. Uh, and it's time to motion, motions are going to close session.
I make a motion, we go into closed session in accordance with N G, uh, North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven. So, sub paragraph A, sub paragraph five and Nash, or North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, A six.
Okay, we're going to close session at seven four fifty-four P M.